Call in.
Councilmember Watts, Councilmember Reebright, Councilmember Harry, Councilmember Joyce, Councilmember Walshy, Mayor Van Hook.
We will not be in attendance. All right, thank you. All right, um, you have been provided and you were emailed, uh, minutes from the work session from April fifth and the regular session from April seventh. I'll give everyone a moment to look at those to see if there's any comments or questions. Okay, any comments or questions? Councilmember Harry?
None.
Councilmember Reebright?
None.
All right, Councilmember Walshy?
None.
All right, so these sets, two sets of minutes will be, uh, up for a vote on Tuesday evening. All right, presentations. Chief Frank.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
This is a report for March, um, of this year, um, seven hundred and thirty-six total calls for service for the, for the month of March, which was up from the previous month of February and down from a year ago significantly. The, uh, criminal investigation unit, um, had a total of fifty-three out of a hundred and two cases investigated for the month of March. Property value reported stolen or damaged, um, in March was eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars in comparison to February was fourteen thousand. So we ended up ticking crime for the month of March. Uh, domestic violence, uh, four cases of domestic violence followed up on or investigated for the month of March. The, um, the major crimes investigations were, uh, two missing persons, uh, one death investigation. And that's it. All right, so, um, deputies went to the area of Brittany Lane and challenges rode under the new bridge, um, subject stripping welding leads. All the subjects were detained after a short foot pursuit and it was discovered that the leads were stolen from a business on Mars Hill Road. Three subjects listed were arrested and charged for receiving stolen property first degree. And we had, um, a subject that was being taken to Metro Jail, uh, for, um, well, he became combative and you can tell, yeah, by that picture, uh, he did some damage to the inside of the door. So, um, kicked out a window, kicked open the right rear door, uh, of the patrol vehicle. And, uh, as they were applying leg shackles, the subject kicked a deputy in the face causing injury. And that deputy was later treated and released from the hospital. And that is all I have. Do you want to have any questions?
Um, I don't have any. Well, one question I do have is the big increase in the dollar figure. Is there any thing in particular that...
Not that I was ma- made aware of, um...
I was just curious. This is on slide four.
The stolen amount, eighty-two thousand dollars, uh, it, it could have been a vehicle, some lawn equipment that could have totaled up to that amount of money. Um, then, you know, I, I don't have any details as to what was actually stolen and or damaged.
I did, I just wasn't sure if there was something like that, you know, some expensive...
Very possibly a, a vehicle involved somewhere.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for your report. Thank you to you and Chief Island and to the, uh, Sheriff's Department for, um, providing the report and all you do for us. Councilmember Harry?
Same. Appreciate it, Chief.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Reebright?
Same here. Appreciate everything you're doing getting the, uh, you know, police department off and running. I know it's very ta- you know, taskful.
Definitely. All right, Councilmember Walshy?
Appreciate what y'all do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. All right, um, next.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
We've got our March since fire and rescue report. So for the month, uh, broken down into our major incident type percentages, hazardous condition, no fire was two point eleven percent. Rescue and emergency, uh, medical was fifty-nine point forty-nine percent, eleven point thirty-nine percent were fires. Point forty-two percent were severe weather, natural disaster calls, uh, false alarm calls, five point ninety-one percent. Good intent calls was eleven point thirty-nine percent and service calls was nine point twenty-eight percent. So the number of incidents and the major incident types, we had twenty-seven fires, a hundred and forty-one calls for rescue, emergency, medical service, five hazardous condition, no fire, twenty-two calls for, uh, service calls, twenty-seven good intent, fourteen false alarm calls and one call for severe weather and natural disaster. Had a total of two hundred and thirty-seven, uh, for the month compared to last year, this time was two hundred and twenty-eight. Uh, total training hours, um, company drill training was four hundred and twenty-three hours, driver operator training, thirty-five hours, firefighter health and wellness was forty-six hours, uh, a hundred and twenty-three hours for hazardous materials training, twenty-one hours of non-fire related training and eight hours of officer continuing education, uh, for a total of six hundred and fifty-six hours. Compared to last year, um, was six hundred and forty-one and a half hours. Turnout time, um, engine one was thirty-eight seconds, uh, engine two had an average of forty-three seconds. Uh, engine three, um, had a total of an average of forty-four seconds. Uh, compared to, uh, last year, engine one was forty-three seconds, engine two was fifty-one and engine three, uh, had an average turnout of thirty-nine seconds. Uh, total response time, uh, engine one was seven oh eight, um, engine two was eight seventeen, engine three was eight minutes, eight seconds, uh, compared to last year, uh, this time, engine one was seven thirty-three, engine two was seven sixty-eight and engine three was seven point ninety-one. Overlapping calls, we had sixty-seven, uh, for the month, uh, for a percentage of twenty-eight point twenty-seven percent of the time. Compared to last year, we had fifty-two overlapping calls for a percentage of twenty-two point eight-one percent. Um, average time on scene, uh, was twenty-four minutes and fifty-six seconds, uh, compared to last year was twenty-one fifty-five. Uh, mutual aid calls, um, we had five mutual aid calls that, uh, we responded to and we received none. Compared to last year, we responded to two calls and, uh, received none. We had, uh, some LZ training for the month, uh, with South Flight, um, all our shifts participated, uh, in some hands-on training, uh, setting up in LZ. Some of the things that we, uh, went over was communication with the helicopter, uh, setting up the LZ with different hazards and obstacles and loading patients. This came in pretty handy for the month because we had two calls where we utilized the helicopter. Uh, one was at one zero eight four five Comedary Road for overturned vehicle. Uh, we executed that patient, uh, started patient care, transported that patient to the LZ where we loaded, uh, them onto the helicopter. We also had a, uh, child that fell from a height of more than fifteen feet from a tree at eighty-four ten Jack Williams Road. Uh, engine two arrived on the scene, started patient care, um, packaged that patient, uh, while engine one set up in LZ in an adjacent lot and, uh, that patient was transported, um, by South Flight. Uh, and then on, uh, the twenty-second of March, we responded to twenty-two thirty-five Fernwood Loop West Southeast. Uh, possible structural fire caused by a lightning strike, um, we arrived on the scene to find that porch had got hit by lightning and busted some tile and then traveled inside, um, inside interior by the front door, uh, there was no fire visible, um, just some burn marks where that lightning had traveled inside. Uh, of course, we shut the power off and advised the homeowner to call an electrician. I want to give an update on the regional training center that we're looking to become, uh, with since fire and rescue. The evaluation has been completed by the fire college, um, this, uh, this month, I think it's next week. Uh, April the twenty-sixth, the executive director is going to present it to the personnel standards commission. Uh, we have his support. We also have the support from our surrounding departments and also our region coordinator to come up regional training facility. This will be great for us. We can, uh, eventually teach a recruit class. We can teach, uh, other classes that, um, if you're not a regional training center, some more advanced classes and it'd be a great retention and approval tool. Any questions?
Oh, thank you, chief, for all the, um, the information. The, um, on the regional training facility, we'll cross our paws that it's, you know, you get a positive result. When would you, um, start utilizing that aspect and, you know, be able to put it into place?
It would be, um, that would be up to the fire college to determine that. Of course, my goal would be to hire a training officer to facilitate and manage that and, um, you know, utilize, uh, instructors in the area, utilize instructors that we have that can teach classes. But, um, you know, that would be up to the fire college. I don't think they, they didn't give me a timeline if they voted yes on it, uh, explicitly.
Um, and I have one other, um, question that we didn't, this was something after our public safety, um, committee meeting. But I've gotten recently some notices when we have a day like today, you know, we've had all this rain about fire warning because of the low humidity and it seemed like it was much worse maybe a couple of weeks ago.
About a week or two, yeah.
Yeah. And you, you get those notices on your phone. Is that, is there something that city can do or, you know, to notify people and really let them know? Because I know that just takes up all your resources unnecessarily that, um, you know, because people are out there burning. And I don't know that people would think, oh, you know, on a beautiful day, they better, you know, shouldn't be doing that, but... So I'm just ask, you know.
Um, you know, the ways that, um, we can do that is, you know, our Fa- the Facebook page, um, I encourage everybody to download the Mobile County EMA app, which is a great, um, tool that you can get notifications, especially with the, you know, hurricanes, tornadoes, fire threat, um, that kind of thing. So, you know, just pushing that information out to, um, social media and, uh, downloading that, downloading that Mobile County EMA app would help a lot, um, because, um, you know, we have a lot of people that like to burn.
Right, and I'm, and I agree. I mean, I get those notifications. I just sort of wonder whether or not, you know, somehow, you know, like leading the horse to water, we really ought to drive it home, but maybe like through social media. Anyway, I just thought, opportunity to ask. All right, thank you, chief, for everything you and your... No, 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 no problem. Oh. Uh, for everything you and your department do. Councilmember Harry?
Chief, appreciate you and your department keeping us safe.
All right, Councilmember Reebright?
Yeah, same here. Appreciate everything y'all do and all the dangerous situations y'all get into to protect the city, you know, the citizens and the community as seen. And I do have the, what, Smart nine-one-one? And it definitely, the last one was going off like crazy, so, uh, the Smart nine-one-one app. I has, is that, is that the county one or...
Uh, that's a different one. The, uh, the, uh, Mobile County EMA app is the one I'm referring to.
Okay.
It's through, uh, Mobile County.
All right, uh, AK, Chris?
No, 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 no.
Councilmember Walshy?
Appreciate what y'all do and the information you keep us informed about everything. It's, it's really good.
All right, thank you, chief.
All right.
Now you can go.
Thank you.
All right, financial report. Financial director, Eric Calhoun.
Just a little light reading.
Always.
Well, good afternoon, evening, whatever time of day it is. When you're in this building, you don't know, so we're looking forward to using them. Uh, of course, this report is for March and the percentage of the year that would be completed is fifty percent. The general fund revenues are at fifty-six point seven-one percent, so this is slightly above budget. As I presented last month, we have specific revenues that are not up to the levels we would like to see. But we also have revenues that were not budgeted that are helping make up the difference, so that's reflected there. Those that are helping make up the difference are fixed sales of fixed assets and franchise taxes, electricity. Some of the things that were budgeted that are coming in above budget are permitting fees. Expenditures in the general fund, um, go by department. So I'm starting on page two now. The executive department is almost eleven percent under budget. And one of the reasons for this is that discretionary funds have not been spent. And I believe that, well, Councilmember Harry, you've been quite good at it. I have, but that's what it's for, right, is to, uh, do what you want to do for the community. So I would encourage those of you who have not used your funds to begin looking at it. I'd like to have them spent by mid-September at the latest. Uh, the administrative budget is about three point four percent over budget and it sort of sounds bad, but it really isn't because the administration budget contains a lot of items that are once a year. Some of your software maintenance and different items like that are in there. Workman's comp insurance and general liability insurance are in there too. Uh, so that's not a bad result. Police department is six point four, six point four, seven percent under budget. Uh, when he gets to where he can hire, I'm sure this is going to change dramatically. The sheriff's department budget is right on target, so their monthly fee is paid monthly and it's easy to, um, project. The fire department, which is on page five and page six, is about five point five, one percent under budget. He's always working to keep his expenses within his budget, but make the most of it. He does a very good job. Emergency operations is at eighty-three point three-one percent of its budget and that's on page six. I'm getting better about putting the page numbers in so y'all don't have to hunt quite so hard. And this is strictly a function of debris removal invoices that came in that were unexpected. Unless we have some disasters between now and September, chief's looking good there too. Municipal court is twenty-six point eight-nine percent under their budget, um, that's on page seven. And one of the reasons is they have a large capital expenditure, operating capital expenditure or software. And today, Councilmember, um, Joyce and I sat with the magistrate and looked at some software and it's promising. So we hope to obligate that before the end of the year. Poet Works, which are, covers several pages, seven through nine, is one point seven-eight percent below budget. So with capital expenditures that have not been requisitioned yet, um, he is just barely under his budget at this time. Yeah, he's not here, so we can talk about it. Permitting, uh, is on page nine and it's nineteen point three-three percent under budget. And several line items in permitting have not been touched, so at this point, that is what's contributing to their low use. Parks are on pages nine and ten. That's seventeen point two percent below budget. But there's a hundred and five thousand in budgeted operating capital expenditures and that, I'm sure, is what makes this budget work the way it does. Community outreach is twelve point seven-four percent under budget. Economic development, which is on page eleven, is eight point three-six percent over budget. This is due to purchasing items to, uh, have at the different events for economic development. And he will use those, or we will use those throughout the rest of the year. Planning and zoning, um, we need to do something about Jeffrey. I'm not sure what. But he's way under budget, about thirty-one point four-nine percent. So, I think, I think maybe you need to use some of your training budget to, uh, educate the BCA. Maybe one of the members. Um, and that's all for the general fund. Local gas tax is on pages twelve and thirteen. Uh, revenues are at fifty-one point nine-nine percent, just above what we budgeted and expenditures are at forty-five point twelve percent or four point eight-eight percent under budget. That is the local gas tax that the city assessed. These other taxes are state taxes. Your four and five cent gas tax, which is on pages thirteen and fourteen, revenues are at ninety-five point four-nine percent. And this is primarily due to the prior year carryover. So, uh, depending on what we do with this fund this year will depend on how much carryover we have next year. Uh, no expenditures have been made yet and I believe I said this last month, McCrory Road extension costs are budgeted for this and the project has not started, uh, to my knowledge. We haven't paid any bills, let me say that. Seven cent gas tax is at ninety percent and it is also there due to carryover. And we have spent a hundred and eighteen percent of, um, the expenditures we planned for and that was the median project, which I believe is complete. So we don't anticipate any more there. Ten cent gas tax is eighty-three point five-six percent of the budget, again, prior year carryover is the reason that we're there. And expenditures are at six point four-seven percent and that's, I think, a few small expenditures related to church street drainage, which we're not going to do. Uh, wholesale gas tax is the last budgeted tax and we don't budget expenditures, but... But with prior year carryover being included, it's at almost ninety two percent of its revenues. You have a check report, and the two things I like to point out each month is that in bond funds, we have spent eight hundred and fifty six thousand, four hundred and six dollars and twenty one cents. That is primarily related to public safety complex, and some of that is related to city hall. And twenty six, twenty three thousand, six hundred of American rebuild funds was spent last month. So, the check report is there for your review. If you have questions on either report, I'm always available.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Thank you to, uh, your staff also, Anna and Monica, for all you do and providing us such a detailed report. Councilmember Herring.
Thank you for cutting on my chest.
We angry please, if you can.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further? Councilmember, for you, please.
Thank you, Ma- uh, Mary. It's, uh, details on these, uh, reports, like you say, it's getting better and better. And there's more good things to come. Thank you.
Councilmember Washington.
Thank you.
One thing I'd like to add before I do sit down is, council, if you have something you want to spend it on, if you will let Ms. Debbie know and give her the details of what you want to spend your discretionary funds on, um, she will get with us and put in a requisition for you, and that is how that process works.
I can help a lot of y'all.
Yes. Councilmember Herring, you've got, very good. I think you're good now, aren't you?
That's good.
No wonder you asked me about mine.
Well, hey, that's twenty seven percent of mine.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. All right, next, the Sims Chamber report, and I see Ms. Brooks is not here, but we've got Ms. Chamber.
Yeah, unfortunately, y'all are stuck in the middle of the night.
Oh, that's a good thing.
Good evening. Um, just want to tell you about some of our upcoming events that we've got going on. On April the twenty eighth, that morning, we'll be at Yellowhand Coffee, having coffee with the mayor. In case y'all don't know, we would love to become me. That's going to be from-
I have questions.
Have some good ones, have some good ones. Uh, that's going to be from eight to ten o'clock. Uh, again, that's on April the twenty eighth. That evening, we're going to be hosting a meet the candidates event. So, if you know any candidates, uh, that are running for office, please ask them to look at our Facebook page. That's going to be on April the twenty eighth also, from seven to P M, uh, that evening. So far, all of the Mobile County District Attorney candidates, uh, have confirmed they'll be there. All of the Mobile County Sheriff candidates, all of the district court judges plan to be there. One of the juvenile district court judges, one of the governor candidates, Jared Budlong. Quite honestly, I haven't heard that name, but, um, anyway, he plans to be there. Secretary of State, uh, those two candidates will be there. And then we've got one of the United States Senate candidates, Carla Dupree. I don't know if y'all know her or not. She actually, she and her husband own Chris and Carla's, a catering business. And, uh, so she will be there as well. Uh, Liz Asian Cuisine and Franklin Lotus will be there as our food trucks. So, come straight to Mark there and eat and, and meet the candidates. So, again, that's on the evening of April the twenty eighth. Our next luncheon will be May the eleventh. Uh, our sponsor is Maiden Sims Podcast, and the spigot will be Bradley Flowers. That's someone that, um, Kenneth made us aware of. He's the owner of Portal Insurance Agency. He's a marketing enthusiast. And, um, his company was named Agency for the Future in two thousand nineteen by Seiko and Liberty Mutual. So, we're really looking forward to, uh, hearing him, get his comments, and see what he can bring to us for our businesses. And then the last thing is, we are having the Sims Senior Sock Hop on May the nineteenth, from one thirty to three thirty. Uh, we're really excited, Ms. Donna, we got a new, uh, uh, new chamber member, Ben, and it is Well Care of Alabama. And she reached out to them and asked them if they would be interested in sponsoring the event, and they are. So, we're very appreciative of that. And so, we will be having that, like I said, on May the nineteenth, from one thirty to three thirty. We're just advertising it within the, the, uh, senior centers, because that's the ones that we're planning to cater to and everything. So, we'll have snacks for them, we've got a DJ that's going to be there, so hopefully that'll be a good time. So, y'all have time, come out to that event as well.
Thank you, Ms. Sharon. Appreciate everything you and the chamber do. Councilmember Herring.
Same, appreciate you, Ms. Sharon, and of course, uh, everything that you and the chamber do for our community. It, uh, really shows us our worth.
Councilmember Ebra.
I have to agree with my fellow councilmembers. Great job, appreciate everything you do in putting businesses and more members to the forefront. Thank you.
Councilmember Washington.
Appreciate what y'all do.
Thank you, Ms. Sharon.
Ms. Mary, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, citizen comments on the services policies and affairs of the city. All right, moving on. All right, review and discussion, proposed ordinances on our agenda. An ordinance amending ordinance twenty twenty one dash eighteen City Assim Zoning Ordinance. Mr. McKee. Good evening. Tell us all about these amendments.
All right, uh, I'll just start off by saying this is, this would be the second time we amended the ordinance that was adopted back in, uh, April of twenty one. Um, and the planning commission has, uh, recommended these amendments. Personally, got the section four point four, um, and that is adding mobile home, um, to the permitted use, table of uses. Uh, we had manufactured home, um, and that's allowed in the R eight and the R four district. And we just, just to clarify, because manufactured home and mobile home, they're very similar in definitions. Uh, so we went ahead and had mo- slash mobile home, just for clarification there. Sitting on the next page. And this one is section four point seven C of the ordinance. Um, and what happened here was, we had R three listed here, which is thirty five feet would be the height requirement for a building. And R four, R four is your mobile home, um, district, and R three is your high-density, uh, multifamily. Um, and I think what got mixed up there was when we did the ordinance, uh, we kind of copied this from another city. And their R three and their R four are different than ours. Um, so we moved the R, R four up to the mobile home district to thirty five feet, and the R three came down here to a hundred feet, um, in building height. The next one is section five point four.
Which one?
It's the very bottom.
Okay.
Yeah. And here we have, uh, no more than one principal residential building. We're taking out the word residential, um, because if you leave that word residential in there, you can have, um, residential and commercial in the same district, um, so, and on the same lot too. Um, so taking out that word residential leaves it as one principal building instead of one present, uh, one principal residential, and also a business too. So, um, we looked at several ordinances, and they didn't include that word residential, so we took that out. And then section six point two. Section six point two was also for clarification, that actually goes back to the table of permitted uses. And we just add this sentence in there, that way there's no question of wha- uh, whether allowed, whether or not it's allowed in R eight, R four. So, we add that in there as well. And section six point four A.
The correct?
Six point four A. Go back up.
The other one. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, got it?
There you go.
There you go.
Okay, it's right here.
Yeah.
Um, before, we added, um, R eight and R one, um, to an accessory use, home occupation. Originally, you couldn't have a home occupation in an accessory building, so it had to be in your primary dwelling. Um, and we felt like adding R eight and R one, which is your bigger lots, um, you can do your home occupation in your garage or your shed. Uh, but before that, you, it had to be strictly in your house. Seven point four. And this one was, if you can scroll down just a little bit. This one was pretty much a correction, um, because all these numbers did not match with the chart down here. Um, I think, I don't know if this was copied and pasted back when we did this from another city, but all the, these numbers up here did not match what was down here, so we kind of just corrected that. Eight point four.
Okay.
Originally, it was fifteen percent of landscape was required for a site plan, so any kind of development, um, they would have to submit a site plan, and you were required fifteen percent landscape of your site, and then ten percent of your parking. Um, and we wanted to lower that number just a little bit, um, because it can be pretty constricting on some development, especially on a larger scale. Um, so the more land you have, let's say, four acres, you have ten pers- uh, fifteen percent of your landscape of the site plan and ten percent parking, so that's twenty five percent, it's a whole acre of your four-acre development. And that's, it's a pretty good bit of, uh, landscape. So, we dropped it a little bit to ten percent, um, just to kind of alleviate some of those, those issues. And then eleven point four.
Okay.
Just a smidge, I'll just, a little smidge.
Right there?
Little bit more. Other way, go down.
Okay.
Um, before, now, we didn't have anything for the BZA to kind of go off of when they're pertaining to special exceptions or variances. Uh, there was nothing really for them to follow. And this is a guideline that's, has came from other cities' ordinances. Um, I've talked with Samara, um, and Jacob as well, they thought this was a good idea to have this in there. That way, um, they have a leg to stand on if they deny or accept the case too. And like I said, this came from several other cities, they had the same, um, qualifications for the cases, for the BZA in there. And that's all we got.
That was the last one?
Yeah, that was the last one. This one.
Okay. All right, um, thank you, Jeffrey, for presenting this. This has been, um, uh, this, uh, proposed changes have been gone over thoroughly by the, um, planning commission. And also during the process of going through, um, these proposed amendments, um, we obviously got input from Jacob, our attorney. And also when Jeffrey, uh, refers to Samara, Samara is, um, our representative from the South Alabama Regional Planning Commission. So, we have, um, some expert, um, advice on making these changes. None of these, um, completely, you know, changed the tenor and the tone of our, um, zoning, but, uh, doing a little bit of clarification and, um, some tweaking. And the planning commission unanimously, uh, recommended these changes to the city council, which, since I'm a member of that, I obviously support. So, councilmember Herring.
I haven't yet, it's been through, uh, zoning, so I don't see anything, you know, like, hard to believe. Anyways, but majority of what he was describing going over sounded a great idea that, you know, that it catches. And I know y'all put a lot of time and resources into creating this one for the city. And, um, you know, a few small little hiccups here and there. Yeah, glad we were able to catch it pretty quickly, since it was only released, but, you know, just last year. So, it's, uh, it's really, uh, I think it's been really great, you know, you're able to find these problems in earth where there shouldn't be. I doubt that y'all probably run into any other issue we have in the future with it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Ebra.
Uh, same here, uh, appreciate y'all meeting this person or listening to, um, life is very informative. Uh, and, you know, it's, uh, basically sounds like, you know, learn and live, you know, going through the process and finding the errors, you know, one way or another and correcting them. It helps us in the long run, uh, make our community keep more prosperous and grow as, uh, the citizens want the city to grow. So, I appreciate all the hard work the planning commission has done in getting to this point of City Assim, City community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Washington.
Appreciate the work y'all do, and that kind of, all that stuff clarifies a lot of things.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKee. All right, next, uh, no more ordinances on the resolutions. We have a resolution for authorization for the mayor to contract with an approved purchasing cooperative for the purchase of furniture for the new city, and new Sim City Hall building. And, um, all right, so Mr. McKee's not presenting, so Mr. Franklin's not here, so, um.
What'd you say? I heard my name.
No, no, it's furniture for City Hall.
Oh, I didn't know about that.
Get while the, why, get while the candy's good. All right, so, I mean, I'll present it. This is very, uh, self-explanatory, obviously, when you're building a building, you got to furnish it. So, um, it'd be a big of-
Any more hiccups?
The mayor and, um, staff are really hard to figure out exactly what is necessary for the, um, new city, uh, City Hall complex. And you can see that the necessary furniture will be roughly, um, two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And so, they're requesting, um, be the, for the mayor to be able to enter in a contract, um, to not exceed two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And I will note that, um, the money is coming, um, for this from the municipal bond. And, um, though we can't budget bond money, that, I guess, I don't know, earmarked is the right way we could say, or designated, that five hundred thousand, um, when looking at what we were going to use bond money for, um, was dedicated for, um, or earmarked for, um, furniture for the new complex. So, this is well under, uh, what was originally estimated to, um, be. So, um, with that said, we obviously need furnishings, um, you know, in a, you know, a little more than what we started with plastic, uh, folding tables and metal chairs, but, um, so we're moving forward from that. So, councilmember Herring, any comments?
As long as we don't buy those plastic chairs. But no, I have nothing further to add to it, you know, got to furnish a brand-new City Hall that we're building. It's definitely going to, you know, be very beneficial to the, uh, to the citizens and, you know, look forward to, um, you know, everything comes up.
Councilmember Ebra.
Oh, nothing much to add to it, but thanks for being a member, uh, coming back in the old days when the city first got started. Uh, now I've got that sock in my head, so.
Believe me, I do.
Thank you.
All right, councilmember Washington.
Well, we got a new building, so we might as well have you first, to, uh, if necessary.
All right, any further? All right, so, moving on, um, committee reports. Um, the first report is, um, the finance, and, um, Chairman Brandon Van Hook. And so, he is not here, but essentially, um, Ms. Mary, you can correct me. We, our last finance committee meeting, um, we focused in on amending the budget.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, we've spent, um, the finance committee spent a lo- a long, a lengthy amount of time going through all the, um, areas that were necessary for amendment. And then the council did, um, which was recommended out of the finance committee, um, and the council did approve those amendments. So, basically, um, that was what we addressed. I don't think we addressed really anything else, did we?
There may have been one request that I don't remember.
I don't remember.
What that was.
Yeah. All right, any comments or questions? Councilmember Herring, councilmember Ebra.
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Washington.
No.
All right, all right, next, committee parks and recreation, Chairman Chung Ebra.
Thank you. Uh, we, uh, did, uh, had meet, uh, early back, uh, or perhaps last month, this month, over at Amelia Park, looking at some changes, uh, to the park. And then we, uh, had a meeting over there in the fire training center, uh, you know, at- And then we, uh, had a meeting over there in the fire training center, uh, you know, at six o'clock talking about, uh, you know, for honoring the fire department and CMTs and police department for a future, you know, park to do so. And most of the conversation was on that. And we talked about some other, you know, park stuff and that's about far as it went on that. We got adjourned on most of it that, you know, come up to this meeting that we'll have in May the second at six o'clock. And everybody's welcome to attend that. Thank you.
All right, any comments or questions, Councilmember Harry? All right, Councilmember Washington.
None.
All right, all right, Councilmember Washington, Chairman of the Historic Preservation Committee.
These ladies that's on this committee do a great job, I can tell you that. They've submitted S M First Baptist Church and a S M First Baptist Cemetery, uh, to be registered with the historical registry. The Blackwell House Historic March, which is, uh, S M Senior Center has arrived. We are looking at the date of May the twentieth, have the ceremony for it. And then the Howell House, the unveiling ceremony for that historical marker has made the fifth and ten eighth.
Okay, uh, any comments or questions, Councilmember Harry? Councilmember Eber.
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Washington. All right, Public Safety Committee. So we've heard from both, uh, um, both our chiefs, let's see. So at our committee meeting, we had updates from both chiefs. On the police department, um, Chief Friend told us, now look at my little list. All the explo- you can correct me if I'm wrong, all the explorers are in. But there's a, the first nine have recalls on them, so gotta deal with, um, with that. And yeah, haven't hit the road and they already had a recall. Um, there was, uh, you're waiting on pistols and more ammunition. And your ticket books are in and your desktops and all-in-one. They want order or they're in, the computers?
No, we, we're, um, we have to order the desktops and we're not gonna order an all-in-one.
The one, okay.
Right.
Right, okay. Um, and we, let's see, oh, and you're waiting on radios. Trying to see if I'm, um, looking at my notes. And, um, we amended, we had discussed the towing ordinance and that was amended, um, to include the personnel of the towing company. And, um, I think, let's see. Trying to think what else we had. Oh, and you had mentioned it'll be coming up at our next meeting, um, sort of like a sticker program for the, for houses, for identifying if there's, you know, like if there's a hearing impaired, uh, different thing, sort of, so that the first response, well, excuse me, first responders know, um, what they might be dealing with when they're going to a residence. So we're gonna talk about, um, uh, that program. And then on the, um, fire department side, um, we also got, um, updates. Chief Brooks gave us a detailed update timeline on the new fire engine. And, um, so, um, with the delivery potentially in August. And so, um, so that's very exciting. Signal lights, he, there was a delay from the representative Temple coming down because he'd gotten sick. But has he come, has he been down?
He is here right now, working.
Okay.
He got here about three-thirty from Prattville, he started working.
How long will it take for them to do that?
He'll be through this afternoon.
Oh, even, great. Okay, great. All right, so that's, there's an update, so. We knew it was imminent, but, um, so today's the day. So, um, hopefully, uh, we'll be seeing, well, hopefully we don't actually ever see the lights go on. That means we don't have issues out there that you have to address. But, um, glad to see those, um, getting, uh, going. You also had annual, you started annual hose testing for, um, that's for the ISO rating. How far are you now in that?
We, we finished up today.
Okay.
We've got to distribute somebody to the station, yeah.
So that's going and, um, um, and then, let's see, so that's hose and then, um, and hydrants. The ongoing issue of hydrants, so, um, gave an update. And, um, our usual contact after, how many years there, forty-something? Mr. Corley has retired from, um, South Alabama Utilities. And so have a new contact to, um, get those hydrants that are out of service back in service and those that are missing reinstalled. I think they're five and five, um, each. And did you want, I'm just gonna defer to you, um, what the current update is on the public safety complex?
I know today, they were working on the diesel exhaust system for the engine bay. The brick has been delivered, that should be starting this week. Chief Friend just whispered in my ear, they did start today, so. Just, you know, the fire line went in with the new hydrant for the sprinkler system. That was tested today. We're still, we still have to warp under the road to, um, put a water supply to the building from the hydrant. So everything, I think the doors were supposed to be delivered, the roll-up doors for the engine bay this week. So a lot of things are happening this week. We kind of got stagnant for about a week or so, but a lot of things are coming in and, and things are moving forward this week.
Right, okay, great. And I think the only other, um, thing, and Ms. Mary touched on, we had our, um, demonstration with Sys- what do you say, SysCon?
SysCon.
Um, software company for, um, court software. And, um, our one-hour demo, I think, was over two hours. So, um, yeah, she, she's waving two fingers at me. So it's quite the detailed, um, presentation that we did here, um, online of a, um, new system. Quite a contrast from the, uh, old system. And, um, so now we wait and see whether or not, um, whenever we get the opportunity to do a demo from Tyler, which we haven't heard anything about. And then the SysCon is currently not a member of the purchasing co-op, but they have applied and done everything and supposedly, um, within a couple of weeks, should have the final, um, decision about, um, being part of the co-op. So that it doesn't have to be bid out if that's the route we go. So, um, in the demo this morning, it was, um, Mary and, um, and also our magistrate Candice Bowlin. So the three of us had the opportunity to ask questions. Some of us are not shy about questions, so. We had, we had a lot of questions, but it was a good discussion and it's, um, um, definitely an improvement over what we have. And, um, so, um, moving, moving forward. All right, so I think that's it for public safety. And, um, Public Works, Chairman Jason Harry.
I was gonna add on my comments for me.
Oh, whoops, oh, okay.
I was gonna say, Jay, uh, Friend, if you're not gonna first like here, it sounds like from that last, uh, guy, you might need to purchase a football helmet, so that way you don't get kicked in the face or flip.
Sorry, any comments or any other comments or questions?
We did get the cages built at the public safety complex, so anybody would like to come by and see how sturdy they are and.
I thought you were gonna say try it out.
I'll be glad to demonstrate how secure they are.
I'm taking a pass. All right, any comments?
That's it.
All right, Councilmember Eber.
Oh, same, we are pass on that too, but appreciate the effort of the chief.
All right, Councilmember Washington.
Nothing.
All right, now, Councilmember Jason Harry, Chairman of the Public Works.
I didn't have anything to say in my committee, so I had to say that. So, uh, we didn't have enough for a forum, so, uh, called the meeting in order and ended up immediately after.
Oh, okay. All right, any comments or questions on that? All right.
Yeah, uh, we did also, because the com-
I was just kidding.
Okay, uh, we did also, um, go and move our meeting for next month because of the conflict, uh, that we're going, most of us will be out of town, uh, so we won't have a call then. So we did move our meeting from May to, uh, to, what, the sixteenth, if that's correct, at six o'clock. And everybody's welcome to come now, but just wanna make sure we probably, you know, notice that, you know, that meeting had to be.
Direct that towards the clerk to make sure that that gets done.
It was there, so, so that's getting posted in family man, I don't know. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. All right, um, Paul, uh, Planning Commission, uh, Jeffrey, Jeffrey scooted out. Anyway, but that's me. So obviously, well, I'll start backwards, we obviously have the zoning amendment. So we had, um, worked on that at the, um, Planning Commission and voted and, um, to recommend it to the council. We had several subdivision applications and final, um, plaques, um, for approval to recommend to the council. We had a commercial site plan, um, and then our work on the, um, comprehensive plan, um, continues. And then, which was probably the most interesting part of our, um, meeting, is, um, that, um, we saw the results of the community survey that was done. We had over five hundred, um, uh, responses online and, um, not as many paper copy, but a lot of utilized it. And according to Samara with, um, Sarksy, that, they said that it was a very good, um, response rate. And it was, um, some fascinating, um, uh, responses as to what people wanna see, um, in Sims and what they think of Sims. And so, um, that'll be utilized as far as, um, developing, um, the comprehensive plan. And, um, and one thing that has the top of the list request is a farmer's market. And they're already, um, working on that. But the other thing was, um, other recreational op- options and, uh, you know, nature trails and walks and birding. So evidently, I, they blame me that I must have stuffed the, um, the survey with the, uh, birding for photo opportunities. But anyway, um, we're grateful for all the people that did participate in the survey and, um, and get that information. And, um, at, at some point, we can, um, present it to council so they can see, um, see what that, what that is. All right, so any comments or questions? I think that's my list, um, yeah.
Mine's mine.
All right, Councilmember Eber.
I did listen to that news online and I was astounded on how much people wanted, you know, especially on the park side, the numbers that came in, like you said, the farmer market, dog parks and stuff like that. So parks, uh, um, you know, parks of the community is very honor that, you know, people willing to have, you know, the amenities that they deserve for the city's sake. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Washington.
Good.
Okay. All right, so any council, legal, legal counselor staff comments?
Well, I'll say one thing, I, I talked with the attorney, representative Sanopio, we got some good news. Before I get there, we've, city staff and I have been working on discovery, we've done some stuff. Hold that recognition, we're not finished with that. Just need somebody to sign that page.
My name, he did put my name on it.
But anyways, we got some good news. Apparently Friday afternoon is, long story short, it's gonna be more money in the pot. We're at like two hundred million for the state at this point. And even better, originally the settlement split was gonna be sixty percent of the state, forty to cities. The states agreed to go fifty-fifty. So, in other words, we're, we're looking to get more money. We still got a little ways to go, there's a million variables involved, uh, you know, it's a nationwide thing, really. But just looking at it.
Oh, okay. Like to hear them. Any other comments? Nope.
No, the lawsuits aren't nearly as, as fun. That don't involve us giving money.
Play this, Mr. Trump. Okay, uh, is Daddy in the comments? All right, anyone on staff?
As you all know, we've put out a notice of employment for a receptionist at the public safety complex. Uh, the notice has been out for about two weeks now, it's gonna end probably the end of April. As of yesterday, we've had a hundred and fifty-five applicants. That's just through indeed. So, I haven't checked the number today, but I've been going through applications and resumes. And me and, uh, Olivia have been looking, so a lot of, uh, overqualified people. But a lot of, a lot of good stuff in there, so just wanna let y'all know on that. It's gonna end, we're gonna cut it off at the end of April and start interviewing probably the first or second week of May.
Wow, but that's a great, uh, response.
Can't imagine alternative. Did the lawsuit like his way.
All right, any other business that might, um, for, um, the council? Anything else? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, second.
Councilmember Harry made a, uh, motion and Councilmember Eber had seconded all in favor. Any opposed or adjourned at seven oh one?